Okay, good afternoon. I move that we reconvene this meeting of the zoning board of appeals. Commissioner Shiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Shiller? I vote yes, and we are back. We'll start with any continuances or withdrawals.
Chairman Nick Fatikas for the record on the top of page nine, it's items 178 25S, 179 25Z, and 180 25Z. We are asking for a continuance because of the missing board member. We have some debate over the conditions that are recommended by staff. I won't get into the specifics, but we'd like to have a full person board hear that case.
Okay, so you're looking for five members?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, so, well, it might be next month if our alternate can, if one of the alternates can do it. Ju- July?
Chair, we're actually, we're not in an immediate rush. If it's July or August, either way, it's, we're okay with it. The subject property without getting into specifics is already leased, so we have to wait for those leases to expire. If the variations are approved, the project wouldn't begin until probably this time next year. So we, we have a little bit of time if, if we need it.
Okay.
For a year. If you can give me July or August, whichever one you want. I just don't want to put pressure.
Okay, okay, so, calendar numbers, 178 25S, 179 25Z, and 180 25Z will be continued to July 18. The 2:00 PM call, Victor?
Yes.
And no further notice will be given. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chairman. Fred Augustine for the record. I'm here for bottom of page 11, 5A 25S. Similar to what my colleague said, I'm seeking a continuance based on, we want five members for this matter.
Okay. Calendar 58 25S. Okay, all right, so, calendar number, so, by rule, you are entitled to the continuance due to the lack of five members. So it will be granted. Calendar number 58 25S will be continued to July 18. The 2:00 PM call and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
All right, Victor, please call the first case.
Going back to a case that was continued from the AM call. Calendar number... 95 25S, 96 25Z, 97 25Z, 215 West 31st Street.
Alderman Lee, that, that is where the, yeah. The, the counsel and his, his witness.
Are there any objectors to this matter?
Hey, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand, including the objectors? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank, thank you very much. Counselor, so we do have some objectors which will be heard as public comment. No interested parties signed up, so they will be given the opportunity for, to give public comment on the application. But we will begin with you providing a brief overview of the application and introduce your witness.
Sure. Two things. I'm going to be in long form mode today because of that. And then also, did you have a recommendation letter you wanted to read or should we?
So we, we don't read the recommendation letters anymore, and you don't have to do long form. You can still do the overview and then introduce your witnesses because everything written is going to be entered into the record. And, and I, I will have a question for the applicant about the letter, but it doesn't get read into the record anymore.
Sure, okay. You're gonna, you're gonna miss my long form though. It was good, it was good. Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairperson and other board members. My name is Richard Toth. I'm an attorney at Georgeous and Sinewicki with offices at 20 South Clark Street. I'm here representing applicant Liberty Mart, Inc., which does business under the name Bridgeport Shell. We're seeking approval of three intertwined applications. One is for special use and two are for variations, all relating to planned improvements to an existing gas station and convenience store business. The property's on 31st Street. It's approximately 12,500 square feet in area. It's improved as a gas station with pumps and related features. And as you would expect, it has a cashier and convenience store building. The property has 125 feet of frontage on 31st and 325 total feet of frontage on public streets and alleys. It's zoned B31, and it has that zoning because not long ago, the Chicago City Council rezoned the property to clear the way for our proposed building improvements and the approvals we are seeking here today. Here with me this afternoon is Azam Khan. He's the chief executive and operating officer of both the applicant and the property owner. We also had a design professional who seemed to be running late, but we're going to make do without him. I'll say that a, add that a gas station has operated at the subject property for more than 50 years, 5-0. The applicant has owned and operated the station for approximately 28 years. The business is family-owned by Mr. Khan and his wife. He's not Shell Oil Company. It's a family-owned and operated business. I can go into detail on the improvements if it's needed, but I just wanted to explain generally why we're coming to the ZBA. As mentioned, our gas station was lawfully established over 50 years ago. Under the current zoning ordinance, every new gas station in a B or C district requires a special use approval. Also, every new gas station in a B or C district generally has to have a minimum lot area of 20,000 square feet, although new gas stations can seek variations to go down to 10,000 square feet. Because our station has been around so long, at 12,500 square feet, it's lawful, non-conforming. However, when certain changes are made to a gas station, including certain increases in floor area, like we have here today, special use approval is required for that building floor area increase. And in the department's view, such a change also gives rise to a need for a variation to reaffirm a lot size less than 20,000 square feet. Also, certain landscape variations are due, required because of the substandard size of a lot based on the city zoning ordinance sizes for new lots. And even though we're adding some additional landscaping over and above what we have now, we still need to tweak it down a little bit to, to get there, and we need a variation for that. Again, I have Mr. Azam Khan as our first witness.
Mr. Khan, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
That is correct.
Thank you. I do have the recommendation letter from the Department of Plan and Development that recommends approval. Have you had a chance to read this letter?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the condition set forth in this letter?
That is correct.
Thank you. So the hearing packet will be admitted into the record. Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Okay. All right, let's go, well, Alderman, Alderwoman Lee, did you want to speak at the end? Do you want to speak after public comment or?
Yeah, I'd speak after public comment. That's okay.
Okay, yeah. All right, so we're gonna go to the objectors for this matter, and we are going to put two minutes up for each public participant here to state their objection. If we could get the two minutes up on the clock. Before we start the clock, I do want to get everybody's name and address on the record, and we'll start with the woman on the end. Could you please state your name and address for the record, please?
Angela Portucci, 3239 South Princeton, Chicago 60616.
Okay, thank you. Sir?
Peter Schuman, 3131 South Wells Street.
Okay, and on the end?
Anne Caruso, 3120 South Wells Street.
Okay, thank you very much. Who would like to go first? You want to speak first?
I'll go.
Okay, so, just so you, so you've got, you've got two minutes to put your objection on the record, and, and then we'll move on to the next one. So with that, proceed.
Okay. Well, my name's Peter Schuman. I lived on the block my whole life, 62 years. Azam bought the gas station from my stepfather, so I know a lot about what's going on there. The biggest problem is, one of the biggest problems is the, the bathrooms. Now, the bathrooms are always a problem because people hung out by the gas stations. Whether there's a Sox game, drunken Sox fans, they're hung out there. They stood there. They, they go in there and they break the bathrooms, and I understand it's always closed, it's always locked because the bathrooms are broke. And Azam told us that today. So I was just wondering, with, with the new blueprints, why can't they put the bathrooms on the inside? They're extending the building approximately 10 feet or maybe more, I'm not sure on that, but approximately 10 feet. Why can't they design it where the bathrooms are on the inside and they have a hold on the bathrooms? You know, they'll know what's going on. And then, my, my second problem is the alley. There's a gate that runs all the way from his building to 31st Street, blocks everything. People coming in there can't park the car in the alley and go into the gas station. When there was no fence there, people would do that. Block the, put the car, the car in the alley and walk in there. It is what it is. That's what they do. And it's always a problem. Now you've got handicapped people living right next door, the old folks home. They use their alley all day. Now they want a right-of-way for the alley for the gas station? It's just too congested. I come through the alley with my family, you're worried about someone flying through the gas station going on the 31st Street. I would, I would like their fence all the way to the alley still. And then when the fence is all the way to 31st Street, people that can't go to the bathroom there usually go in the alley. Now I could pull out of my garage, and we see people pissing. People, they'll just stand there, and they'll turn around. What are you gonna do? You know, that's what they say.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. Who would like to go next?
Go next. So, a couple of things. I think, generally speaking, I think an oversized gas station at this corner, flanking the end of a residential street is completely unnecessary. It's, it's supersized. We already live in a very congested part of the city. We lead, you know, two blocks down, we're at the ballpark. We have a lot, a lot of traffic, a lot of movement that goes on at that intersection. It's just encouraging more traffic, and the driveway is now extending into the public alleyway. You're swooping through, and now you're opening that up. So there's, there's just this pool of traffic going in and out. I can't even get home from work sometimes. It is that congested at the intersection. So I don't think it's necessary. If you want to make an improvement, yes, by all means do. It's always nice and pretty a building up, but it doesn't need to be two stories, number one, and it doesn't need to be expanded 10 feet to the west. The bathroom is being moved along with the 10-foot expansion. It could stay on the inside of the building to monitor security with people using the bathrooms outside and doing things they're not supposed to be doing, vandalizing, having sex, doing drugs, twerking on top of the pumps. This could be monitored from the inside. This is what happens, okay? You may not be aware of it, but it's what happens. In addition, I don't, I don't really know what the intention is to expand the gas station. Is it for, are we adding value to our properties? Not sure. Is it necessary? I don't think so. In addition, I'm not really sure what the full intention is of the owner down the road. There are three, four other gas stations down 31st Street, and I could tell you, they all look like crap. This is what is happening in our neighborhood. Garish storefronts, slot machines, and, and selling everything under the sun but wholesome good food products. So I'm not sure what the purpose is.
All right, thank you very much. Would you like to go?
Yes. My name is Anne Caruso, and I respect that. The owner of the gas station's been there for 50 years. I've been in my area for 72 years. I respect the people in my community. People have reached out to me to have a meeting. We've had the meeting. I wasn't at the very first meeting that was held a couple of years ago, but they said things have been changed since that meeting took place. I can't verify that. I wish we had more time to get those records to compare them. But we were at two meetings in the Alderman's office. She was, gave us the meetings, which I thought was very nice of her, and we, I left there the second meeting hoping that things were going to be better. I got the impression that they were. And then you hear other things, and, and Mr. To, or Mr. From the gas station, he did send out somebody to clean the streets up the very next day. I took a picture. Oh, that was great. Then somebody else used the bathroom. That was great. That only happened once. So my feeling is, first of all, there's two schools and a daycare within like 300 feet of that. There's a Asian school, an early learning center. There's St. Jerome School. There's another sent, a school down the street from Franco's. There's, like the young lady said, there's a lot of congestion in that area. We get the ballpark traffic that is not supposed to come down that way, but it happens. They just promise you one thing and do another. And I want to have trust in people because I'm a very, I want, I want people to trust me, but I want to feel the same way about them. And I've lost trust in people because they say one thing and do another. I don't think it's fair to me. I don't think it's fair to my community, my family members, our churches, our schoolchildren. And I Googled, and again, I'm not the smartest person in the world, but I don't think there's another gas station that's two stories in the city of Chicago or the surrounding suburbs. If there is, I'd like to know where they're at and what, what's the need for them. And on the blueprint that bothers me is, he's showing an eight-seat lunch table. Ask him how many people work in that gas station, that he needs an eight-seat lunch table. My office didn't have an eight-seat lunch table. So you're gonna tell me two people worked there, but you need, eventually it's going to be something that's corrupt, in my opinion corrupt. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, before we get to Alderwoman Lee, let's, let's go back to the applicant to address some of the comments that we just heard. Wherever you want to start.
Sure. One second. First thing we heard was about, was about bathrooms. Mr. Khan, there have been a problem with vandalism to the bathrooms, which of course you have to repair. Is it the case that the bathrooms have been, the bathroom has been repaired and it's fully operational now?
Yeah, all the fixtures have been replaced, new, and they're up and running.
Open and, open for business, right?
That is correct.
Also, as part of the changes we're proposing for security and otherwise, you've agreed to add something on the level of 20 new security cameras, and those cameras will have live feeds to the 9th Police District. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And then we're gonna focus something in that bathroom area to discourage anybody milling about longer than they should be and to record it for the police sake. Is that correct?
That is correct.
You're also going to, you've agreed, and this was on the record, in the Alderman's office, you're gonna retrain staff to be monitoring the, the, the whole facility on a more, on a regular basis and to be much more aggressive about calling police if it's needed. Is that correct?
Yes, and we also maintaining the logbook for passports.
And also, in that area by the bathrooms, we've agreed to put up a privacy screen which is, will help insulate it from the neighbors so that hopefully that there's some, some distance there. Is that correct?
It would be a six-foot fence, yes.
Okay. We heard about the, the fence along the alley, and that's actually a, a point of concern that we had, and a, a point of concern that we were really struggling to address and really wringing our hands. The site is adjacent to an alley, some, that we actually had some inconsistent feedbacks. The lot itself is adjacent to the alley, and there was some, some, there was some inconsistent feedback. Several people would prefer a fence in that area, and that was something that we were trying to do at first. Some other folks were, were always talking about how there is an elder residence on the other side, and it's maybe not safe, and it's, if there's no fence, it's, it's and it's maybe not safe, and if there's no fence, it's better for those folks. They can get off on our property. We struggled with that. There's, with gas refueling trucks, there's some scenarios where a truck might have to sort of go off our property line into the alley to maneuver. So one reason we can't put a fence there is that. And that was because turn radio, we're requested and analyzed by the Department of Planning and Development planners. So they didn't want a fence there. Another issue is, we talked to Shell Oil about it, and the franchisor has things to say about the alley design. And again, because of the trucks, they will not allow a fence along that line. And then a third issue is that we were thinking about a rolling fence in that area, and this is all in the northwest corner of the property along the alley. That span is about 38 feet long, it's almost 40 feet long. So it's, we, there's no, under the laws of physics, there's no way we can have sort of a fence that rolls back and forth. So we struggled with that, all that, is that correct, Mr. Azam? Is everything I said correct?
That is correct.
But we did put sort of safety bumps along that aisle to discourage anybody moving over that, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, another thing we heard was about having a supersized lot. I think you are aware from the survey and our testimony that the lot is actually 12,500 square feet, and the standard new gas station size under the city zoning ordinance is 20,000 feet. So we're kind of a fraction of that. So just in terms of numbers, that's not exactly true. There are concerns about security. You've, again, going back, Mr. Khan, the intent is to add the 20 or so new security cameras with feeds to the 9th Police District, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then we've struggled with, there's been a perception from neighbors based on nothing that we know, but there's been a perception among neighbors that we want to put some type of casino on a second floor or put gaming machines or put sweepstakes machines. You've heard that at the meetings, I think, is that correct?
Correct.
And that has never been part of the plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
Those are not legal in the city of Chicago, is that correct?
That is correct.
It may, I don't know, I haven't seen it. It may happen, but that has never been your plan, is that correct?
That is correct.
And then to assuage that concern, and with the alderman's help, we have agreed to a restrictive covenant to be recorded against the property that would prohibit electric or gaming machines, sweepstakes machines, is that correct?
That is correct.
And for good measure, we're throwing in no alcohol sales, is that correct, too?
Absolutely not, yeah.
Okay. And so it is the case that that second floor is not going to be a casino, it's going to be an office space and some break room, because this is your, this is all of your business, is that correct?
Absolutely.
And the only space in there for the employee, I've seen, I've been in there, I could probably reach my arms out and touch all the walls of that little room where the employee sits. And that's all, you have to work whether it's one employee or two employees or three employees, is that right?
That is correct, Counselor.
Oh, shut up now.
Okay. Before we go to Alderwoman Lee, are there any questions from the board at this time? All right, Alderwoman Lee?
Sure, thank you Chair, and thank you to the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm appearing before you today in support of today's application. The applicant, I met him as soon as I took office. His zoning change had already been approved, and he had plans that he was working on. It took the better part of two years for these plans to actually get to this point, at which point the Zoning Board of Appeals had to come into the, had to come into play because of the special use permit and the variances, and the notifications to the community were sent out. It was at that point, as notifications went out, that I started to receive calls from the community inquiring about what was going on with this. There were some in the community who were not aware that the zoning change had taken place, that took place during a transition between, you know, administrations here. And I wasn't involved with the zoning change. So I was happy to oblige to bring everybody together from the community to hear their concerns, to relay what was the sort of whatso of everything, that it's before the Zoning Board of Appeals and for what purpose. It's before the ZBA. Many issues were covered in the two meetings across more than four hours, actually. We had two meetings. The first meeting, we got a lot of information. I asked to take that back and have some conversation with the applicant as well as to come back to the community with sort of the outcome of that. We reconvened earlier this week where we presented some of the things that were referenced earlier by Mr. Toth. Mr. Khan has agreed to a restrictive covenant that absolutely covers the prohibition of liquor, video gaming, even though video gaming's not legal currently, and sweepstakes machines. And that was something that was a very big issue that was brought up. There were other issues as well, security concerns. You heard some of those here, as well as some additional, just around the perimeter of the gas station. We relayed to the community as well that whatever plans were shown to them initially were always subject to zoning and DPD review. And the plans that were re-presented at our community meetings were those that were signed off on essentially by DPD. Included a sidewalk that folks really had a problem with because it was on the back southwest corner of the property, and it was felt that that would be an easy place for criminals to go back and forth from. The security or the privacy fence was put up as a concession, as an offer to the community to block any sort of activity that they could visually see pointing towards the bathrooms. Knowing, not knowing what the requirements were from DPD, I actually took that as a call to DPD Tuesday morning and understood from them what the requirements were for that sidewalk. And is it a compromise DPD has signed off on? I think it's one of the conditions that you have there, a swinging door that can be locked when the, when the gas station is closed. My understanding is that through the first set of community meetings for the zoning change, Mr. Khan used to be open 24 hours. As a result of some of the issues that were raised at that initial meeting back in 2022, they changed their hours. So they now are only open from, I think, 5:00 or 6:00 in the morning till midnight. So their hours have been reduced, and I think that that has provided some significant improvements. Though, you know, I don't live right there, and the neighbors do, and they have, there were very legitimate gripes that needed to be addressed, which I feel, you know, as an alderman, we don't satisfy everybody, you guys don't either. I feel like nobody walked away with everything that they wanted, so it was a sign of a good compromise, which is why I'm here today to provide my support for the proposal as it is. I would like to see an improved property. This gas station has been here for 50 years, has remained unchanged, and it looks like a 50-year-old gas station. So if there's an opportunity for us to improve the property, to make the street look better, and I can't speak to what happened prior to my being in office. I made a commitment to the community to hold Mr. Khan accountable for the promises that he's made. And I believe that the improvements that are going to be made to the site and some of the improvements that he has already undertaken to make sure that the street is clean, that we've got a little bit more, a few more eyes on the parking lot to prevent the loitering that leads to a lot of the behavior that is very undesirable and frankly, a nuisance to the neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, I want to thank everyone for coming in today. We are going to take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, okay.
The applicant for 4903 West Chicago, come forward, please.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I am the applicant, Davana Appelin. And I would like to ask for a continuance, please.
Okay, and what's the basis for the continuance?
That I have unexpected unexpected objection that I wasn't prepared for, for today.
Okay. All right. July or, okay. Can we fit it in June? Okay. Calendar number 18725-S will be continued to June 20th, the 2:00 PM call, and no further notice will be given.
Thank you.
Going back to our call, case 18125-Z, 3710 West 113th Street.
For that last one, too, if the officers have any documentation that they want to submit, you need to do it, I think it's three days before the hearing. So if you go on our website, you can see our rules. But if you want, if you have evidence that you want to submit, it's three days before, right, gentlemen? Yeah, three days. Okay, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Great, thank you, sir. For the record, Nick Fatikas from the Law Offices of Sam Banks. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, James Gorney. The applicant owns and resides at the subject property located at 3710 West 113th Street. As you can see from the survey in the aerial, the subject zoning lot is substandard in depth and lacks alley access. And for that reason, many of the homes in this area are built favoring one side of the lot so that a front driveway can be accommodated. The subject property is improved with a one-story, single-family home, and the applicant's proposing to construct a second-story addition. The plans also call for a new covered porch at the front of the home. In order to permit the addition and porch so that they align with the existing building walls, the applicant is seeking variations to reduce the front and east side setbacks. Even with the technical reductions, the project will maintain over 15 feet of combined side setback total, again, consistent with the other homes on the block. In terms of hardship, we're dealing with an existing non-conforming building as well as a substandard lot that lacks alley access at the rear. We do have our two witnesses, the applicant, Mr. James Gorney, and our project architect, Helen Liptak. And with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. For both of the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Go ahead.
Is this going to be for, are you going to be living here?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Any other questions? We'll take this, oh, you have something to say?
If we could just go back to the zoning map real quickly?
Sure.
I just would ask the board to take a mental image of this map because the case that was continued earlier also has a front driveway. And I just want the board to remember that a front driveway is, exists already in the city, throughout the city.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we will take this matter under advisement. Thanks.
Thank you, enjoy your weekend.
Case 18225-Z, 3933 North Levitt.
All right, good afternoon. Sir, would you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
All right, thank you Chairman, again, for the record, Fred Augustine, here on behalf of the applicant, Aldo Vutagio. Did I spell that correctly? All right, the applicant and his wife and family own the property at 3933 North Levitt. It's improved with a newer, single-family residence with a rear garage. The garage has a rooftop deck. The applicant acquired the property in August 2023. He acquired it directly from the developer. Recently, when the applicant wanted to incorporate a pergola on top of the rooftop deck, he submitted a permit. As it turns out, the garage with the rooftop deck was built differently from what was reflected in the building permit plan. So with that, our applicant is seeking to just correct what was built. So we're seeking variations then to reduce the combined side setback from 6.8 feet to 2.87 feet, north side setback from 2 feet to zero, as well as reducing the rear setback to 1.88 feet. Here with me this afternoon is the applicant. We did have our architect, but he had a family situation that arose, so he was not able to make it. And just Chairman, real quick, hardship. It is a short lot, it's only 124 feet deep. But more importantly, again, the applicant, he acquired it like this, liked it the way it is. He had no say in the design, he bought it spec. So we're just here to correct what was built.
Understood. Who was the developer, so we can put him on the naughty list?
Who was it?
I don't know his full name. I only know his first name, Joseph, but I don't know the last name offhand.
All right. Sir, anytime that we're coming in on a case where either your own client did the work that was not permitted or a prior developer did it, if you know it, come with it. Because we want to know.
Okay.
Okay, are there, oh, sir, for you, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Did you say that the lot depth was 25 feet?
It's 124 feet deep. Yeah.
All right, with that, we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 18325-S, 102527 West Argyle.
Okay, would the witnesses please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
I do.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Sounds great. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Emmanuel Byer, I'm an attorney at Shane Banks, an attorney for the applicant, Mademan 108, Inc. The applicant is seeking a special use permit to establish a packaged good liquor store at 1025 to 27 West Argyle. It's on the corner of West Argyle Street and North Kenmore. The property is zone B32. The property is improved with a three-story building, and they're just seeking to activate the existing ground floor commercial space. The liquor store will occupy about 3,400 square feet of space. The applicant is an experienced operator and actually operates a packaged liquor store about a couple hundred feet up at 1040 West Argyle. They're simply moving just for customer demand and traffic. So they're just simply seeking a larger unit. I do want to highlight that it is a very heavily populated commercial area, and so it will fit within the retail and other restaurants that are in the area. Today, I'm joined by Jim Hatz, the applicant, and the applicant's representative, Ryan Hatz. We're happy to answer any questions you guys have.
Great. Do the witnesses affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Have, for the applicant, have you had an opportunity to read the recommendation letter from the Department of Planning and Development?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you guys so much.
Thank you very much.
Case 18425Z, 2622 to 24 West 36th Street.
All right, good afternoon. Could the witnesses please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes, sir, we do.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
My name is.
Counselor, you were speaking over me.
I would never do that.
Oh, you, you. All I, all I was saying was, give us a, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Sure. My name is Paul Colpak, I represent the applicant, Danny's Construction. Property is currently a 50-foot lot. One of the lots is improved with the single-family home. In order to divide this lot and to build on to the second lot, we have to legalize the existing single-family home. Purpose here is to do that, we're requesting variation from 1632 to 10.25 on the front setback, the east setback from two feet to .05, and the west from two to 1.6, and the combined from five feet to 2.1. This would allow us to divide the property and to build a single-family home on the, on the existing vacant. To my right is Mr. Bogdan Mietis, he is the applicant, and to his right is our esteemed architect, Peter Sternyak.
Thank you very much. Do the witnesses affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you, they'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
I'm not going to speak, thank you very much. That was fast. Have a great day, everybody, do well.
18525Z, 4735 West North Avenue.
Hey, could the witnesses please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Dean T. Marigus of the law firm of Marigus, in Marigus here in Chicago. With me is the applicant, Maurice L. Neely, and our appraiser, Bud Kerwin, here to testify on our behalf. We're talking about an application for a variation to establish a public place of amusement license for a proposed sports bar and restaurant in a proposed one-story building which is located within 125 feet of a residential building. We've worked with the community, we have here an attender to the board, a letter from Alderman Mits, in whose ward this property is located, and she is in favor of the special use.
And we do have that in the file.
Good. Without further ado, we leave ourselves open to questions from the board.
Thank you very much. Do the witnesses affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
I do.
Thank you very much, they'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Excuse me, just for the record, I said special use, I meant variation.
Yeah. It's one of those weird things where it kind of feels like it should be a special use, but it's under the variation standards.
Next case, 18625S, 5394 North Milwaukee.
Right, would everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Counselor Barton, if you want to give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses?
Sure. My name is Tim Barton. I'm an attorney with the law firm of, of Sorry, I just, Tom Rains LLC. I'm here with the applicants and, and our expert appraiser. So this is Denise Gonzalez, I just want to be sure I have this right. Yavez, thank you, and her husband, Mehmet Yavez, and Mike Wolin, who's the expert appraiser whom I think you're familiar with. So what the applicants are proposing is the special use to establish a hookah, hookah bar at the southwest corner of Milwaukee Avenue and Manila Avenues, which is improved with a one-story commercial storefront building. It's a prominent corner. The building, however, is vacant and rundown. It's, it's, it's been vacant for several years. And so people are anxious, the ward is anxious to see this improved. The applicants are proposing substantial improvements of upwards of a million dollars possibly. This will include improvements to the public parkway. So the applicants currently operate two hookah lounges, one in Chicago and one in Roselle, Illinois. And that's, that's the summation. I want to state one thing for the record. There's been a question about the hours of operation. The hours of operation will be with the agreement of the aldermen, or at the insistence of the aldermen, from four o'clock, or, sorry, five o'clock until midnight every day. I talked to the alderman's office this morning, asked if a 2:00 license, 2:00 closing was available, or was an option on Fridays and Saturdays. They said that was not, that was not consistent with what, what was stated or agreed to at the public meeting, community meeting. The alderman, however, did say if this operated in a, in a safe way and, and was best for the community, he would consider expanding the hours on the weekend until 2:00. So for the record, the hours will be every day from 5:00 until midnight.
Okay, thank you for that. It was also the, I think the, the 12:00 AM close time was, was what was submitted in your packet as well.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
It was.
Or 4:00 PM to 12:00 AM? Okay. Okay. For the witnesses, do all of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, they'll be admitted into the record. For the applicant, have you had a chance to read the Department of Plan Development's recommendation letter?
Yes, we have.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
We're happy to.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? Okay, so we will take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next case, 18822Z, 1108 through 10, North California.
Hello. Good afternoon, members of the board.
Good afternoon. Sir, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, go ahead and give us a brief overview and introduce your witness.
Sure, my name is Daniel Rubino, I'm an attorney for Trulia Kaplan Attorneys. This is Isaac Lieberman, who owns the business called HiLo LLC, doing business as HiLo, owns the business and also owns the building through a different entity. This is at 1108 through 1110, North California. This is a bar that was licensed in 2021 and has built up a following in the neighborhood as a nice quiet place to meet friends and have a drink. There's no food license. As part of the license process, he has already agreed to a plan of operation back in 2021 to protect the surrounding neighbors. And by all accounts, the business is an asset to the community. In an effort to expand the offerings, Isaac came up with the idea to offer some private ticketed events, and also to offer, as part of those events, to bring caterers in for his customers. Other than that, the operation would be the same. And we discussed this with Business Affairs, they said that even though this is not a amusement per se, it would cover any ticketed events. And as you know, this is a C1-2 zone, a PPA is, cannot be issued within 125 feet of the RS3 zone, which is behind them. They're separated by an alley. We filed the zoning application, Alderman Fuentes of the 26th Ward sent a recommendation, pardon me. We filed the zoning application and Alderman Fuentes of the 26th Ward sent a recommendation in support of the variance. He said that the business has operated without incidents. We sent notice to the neighbors, have not heard any objections, and we're not asking for any physical changes to the building, just a change in the use, and so that we now ask the board for approval.
Thank you very much. For the witness, do you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge?
Yes.
Thank you very much, they'll be admitted into the record. Are there any questions from the board?
Would the hours of any events be materially different from the opening, open hours? Okay, thank you.
They are bound by, their hours are bound by the pardon me?
The existing use.
Tavern, taverns.
Yeah.
And patio.
Any other questions?
And plan of operation. That's what I meant.
Okay, we'll take this matter under advisement, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Case 18925S, 4832 to 52, West 47th Street.
Hey, will everyone planning to testify, please raise your right hand? Do you swear or, including, are you hearing objection?
Yes.
Right hand, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings? Thank you very much. Okay, we will start with the applicant. Please give us a brief overview of the application and then introduce your witnesses.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Megan Murphy from Thompson Coburn. I am an attorney on behalf of the applicant, BP Products North America Incorporated. I'm also here with Melissa Tenoco, the project manager and representative for the applicant, as well as the appraiser, Peter Pullos. We are here today seeking approval of a special use in order to use the existing surface parking lot at the property located at 4832 to 52, West 47th Street, and use it as an electric vehicle charging station with up to 47 charging, charging spaces. I would also like to mention for the record that there was a letter of recommendation from alderperson Rodriguez's office that was updated as of this morning and provided to the board. I also have extra copies if that would be helpful.
Yeah, we'll take the extra, I have a copy of it in my hand, but for the other commissioners, that would be helpful, thank you. Okay. All right, for the witnesses, do both of you affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you, they'll be admitted into the record. For the applicant, have you had an opportunity to read the recommendation from the Department of Plan Development?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter? Thank you. Are there any questions from the board before we go to the objector?
Clarification, this is an existing parking lot, right?
Yes. Yes.
So will this be now exclusively for electric vehicles, or will it be a combination?
Exclusively electric vehicle charging.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to the objector. If you could first state your name and address for the record, please?
My name's Joanne Williams. My address, did you want?
Yes, please.
4631 South Le Mans.
Okay, so your testimony today will be considered a public comment, and you get two minutes to state your objection on the record. So with that, we'll put two minutes up on the clock, and you're free to proceed.
My name is Joanne Williams, I've been a community resident for 58 years, a disabled Army veteran and president of the Hearst Community Organization since its inception in 1987. A charging station will be located at the end of my block. Community issues, public health, safety and security for the neighborhood and children. Facility is located directly across the street from Hearst Elementary School. The charging station will have strangers outside the neighborhood and hanging around for 45 minutes. Possible increase in crime, children and neighbors, children and neighborhood kids walk near and around the proposed site on Le Mans, Lacrosse and 47th Street. They walk to McDonald's using these routes. The only monitor they have for security is a camera, there's no personal attendant. Potential vandalism due to Tesla being set on fire. Homes are located across the alley on Le Mans and Lacrosse. If a vehicle is set on fire, there's a possibility of embers landing on homes about 30 feet from the facility, causing a fire or fires. Also, the current fencing is made of wood, we believe that to be a hazard. Traffic flow, entry and exit of vehicles could back up traffic flow on 47th Street, a very busy street. We're concerned about property values, we will have a negative, will have a negative impact and increased property taxes. Adverse effect on surrounding community. There has been no drawing provided.
I'm sorry, could you, could you slow down for, we'll, we'll, we'll give you a little bit of leeway on the time, but if you could slow down for the court reporter.
Oh, okay, I used to be one of those.
Okay, so you understand her struggle right now.
All right. Adverse effect on surrounding neighborhood, there has been no drawing provided to the community showing the design, what will it look like? Electrical output, we were told that the station will have its own transformer, however, it will be connected to our, our regular electrical grid. Our community is prone to blackouts even on perfectly good, clear days. We've had one community meeting, there were three, only three We've had one community meeting. There were three, only three residents. One Zoom meeting with, with three residents in February or March. The Tesla vandalism was not an issue at that time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, let's go back to the applicant. Because I, I have, I have a question. Is, is a fire hazard with electrical charging vehicles, is that a, is, I mean, is that a known risk? I wasn't aware.
It's not a known risk. It's not a known risk for EV charging hubs, which is what we're producing. You know, we don't have the, we, all of our units are UL certified. They're all installed by licensed electricians. We'll be coordinating with local utilities to ensure that, you know, everything is hooked up accurately and according to our electrical requirements. As far as the maintenance of the EVs themselves, I mean, it's individuals maintaining their own vehicles. We did address this comment with the chief fire department, as well as the alderman, and provided feedback as well.
I have.
Go ahead.
Are you, what kind of connections will be on these chargers?
They come with two different ports to satisfy both types of electric vehicles. And they're also, they also have shunt trips, which, you know, shunt tilt switches, which is if there's any issues with the unit, shunt, S-H-U-N-T, and tilt switches. So if there's any issue with, if they knock the unit over, it automatically turns off.
Could you, could you, yeah.
Yeah, so if there are any issues with hitting the unit, they automatically turn off. Same with the electrical equipment itself. There are shunt trips in the meters themselves, so they will turn off. And we have an emergency stop disconnect on site, so they, they can be manually turned off, so.
I think that what the, what we were hearing in, of concern was for the recent attacks against Tesla products in particular. And, and I think that was the reason for concern about fire, but also about the security cameras. So can we just get clarification on that? So you have one security camera on the property?
We'll have several security cameras on the property that will be monitored 24/7. So we will, you know, we do have dispatching timelines. In case there is any issues, we'll be. Oh, sure, sure. So we do have monitored security cameras. So we do dispatch for emergencies, services, all hours of the day. There, I just want to correct the timeline for each, these are DC fast charges. So the timeline for each individual to charge their vehicle that would be sufficient for them to continue on would be 15 minutes. That's the average. So in terms of vandalism, from what I've seen, which is rare occasion, it's on vehicles that are unoccupied for long periods of time. Whereas these vehicles will not. They will be occupied the entire duration of, of their charging.
And I, I think maybe in a lot of cases we've heard today where there were concerns about security, there was an agreement to connect the security cameras to the local police district, which in this case might work in terms of getting a very quick response if in case there were a fire.
Correct, yes.
So that's something you plan on doing. So you'll have more than one security camera and they'll be connected to the police district? And I, I was, how close is this to the airport?
I believe it's a mile and some change, 1.8.
Because it had an airport sign there and it didn't look that close, so.
So it's, it's on, honestly, when you drive it, it's fairly close.
So, but it's not, it's probably not a place that people will park while they go somewhere. This is more a place where someone who needs to get their car charged.
Correct. Yeah, it's more for a person who has maybe left the airport. They're on their way home and they need to fill up really quickly, yeah.
Real pain. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for the call, or the comment.
All right, any other questions from the board? Okay, I want to thank everyone for coming out. We will take this matter under advisement. Thank you. Yeah, you could, that would, that would help, yeah, for the court reporter.
Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. Would the witnesses please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth in these proceedings?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor, please give us a brief overview and introduce your witnesses.
Sure. Rolando Acosta, here on behalf of the applicant. Here with me today is Bill Williams, who is a managing member of the LLC that is the applicant here, and also Jacob Waller, who is with Eckernoff Saunders, the architects for the project. The subject property is at the northwest corner of Hubbard and Morgan. It is currently vacant. It is proposed to be developed with a 79, basically a seven-story building with 79 units, 20 parking spaces. It was vetted by the community in multiple community meetings, sponsored by the river, Neighbors of River West Organization, and recently, on April 16th, was approved by the city council under type one rezoning for the proposed development that you see. The reason that we are here today is because we are within 660 feet from a warehouse wholesaler of fish that is immediately west of us or across the alley from the property. And it is also, this is predominantly a residential neighborhood, as it has developed recently. That facility, the warehouse facility, actually surrounds a residential building to its north and to its west. There's residential across from it. To our east, there's also residential. To our northeast, there's a school, Benedict School. And to the north are planned residential developments. So this is pretty much a residential neighborhood. Our buildings are fully enclosed. We have access to our building both from the alley and Morgan Street, so we shouldn't interfere with that business. It has its loading docks on the alley, but that should not also interfere with us. With that, Mr. Chairman, we are happy to answer any questions.
Great. Do the witnesses affirm that the materials submitted with the hearing packet are still true and correct to the best of your knowledge? Thank you very much. They'll be admitted into the record for the applicant. Have you had a chance to read the recommendation letter from the Department of Plan and Development?
Yes.
And do you agree to be bound by the conditions set forth in that letter?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board? We will take this matter under advisement.
Thank you. Have a great weekend.
It's everything, right? Okay, I move that we convene into closed session pursuant to Section 2C4 of the Open Meetings Act for the purpose of considering the evidence and testimony presented in open session. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. We're in closed session. Hey, I move that we return to open session. Commissioner Schiller seconds. Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes, and we are back. We will now vote. Note that any motion to approve a special use will be tied to the recommendations of the department and any additional conditions read by me. First, I move to approve all continuance requests to the dates stated by me. I move to approve application for calendar number 18125Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 18225Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 18325S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 18425Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for calendar number 18525Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 18625S. Um, with the additional, uh, condition agreed to on the record, that the closing time be no later than 12:00 AM on any day. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 18822Z. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 18925S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve application for counter number 19025S. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller?
Yes.
I vote yes. The matter is approved. I move to approve the written resolutions containing findings of fact consistent with the votes of the board at its April 18, 2025 regular meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. The resolutions are approved. I move that we adjourn the meeting. Commissioner Schiller seconds, Commissioner Staley?
Yes.
Commissioner Soto?
Yes.
Commissioner Schiller? I vote yes. We are adjourned. Have a great weekend, everyone.